Mayor, it is three o'clock. We do have a quorum. We can get ready or we can go at your pleasure.
All right, let's go ahead and get started.
Oh, Mayor, you got muted.
Push, darn it. Council members, I typed in the chat who I'd like to do the pledge, admission, et cetera. And if you could make sure to type questions and comments into the chat since I'm virtual, that will help me much today. And my apologies for being virtual, but I am still a little under the weather. So today is Tuesday, January 21st, 2025. It is the city council's regular meeting. And I'm calling it to order and giving notice to members of the public and to the city council that at this regular meeting, the city council may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public for discussion and consultation with the city's attorneys for legal advice in any item listed on the following agenda. Can we roll call?
Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan. Councilmember Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember House.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Spence.
Here.
All right. Thank you. I am, I don't have my things here. So, Councilmember Matthews, would you lead us in the thoughts?
Thank you, Mayor. Please stand if you're able.
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Councilmember Aslan.
I can read our land acknowledgement. Yeah, the Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains that are sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. Next up, we have the open call to the public. This enables the public to address the council about an item that is not on the prepared agenda. Comments related to items that are on the agenda will be taken at the time that that item is discussed. Open call to the public appears on the agenda twice, now at the beginning and again at the end. If you wish to address the council, please fill out a comment card. You have three minutes and our city clerk will call the names today.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two public commenters. The first is Nadine Hart.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm here to talk about our last Housing Authority Board meeting. It's very interesting to me that more people don't attend because as of the last meeting, the Housing Authority wants to take on the City of Williams. They want to absorb all 50 of their vouchers. The reason being that they're fighting with short-term rentals and housing is limited. So when I asked as a board member, well, if they can't find housing, why are we bringing those vouchers into our community where we're not even at 100% occupancy rate for housing for our own voucher holders? And they like to bring up that we need to be humans and things like that. But 90% is not 100%. And we already know in our community that we struggle with the same things. They argue that it's not the case Williams residents are going to come here. Why wouldn't you? If you can't find housing, we have more job opportunities, a better selection of schools for children, and there is more housing apparently. So I was very opposed to this, not because I'm heartless as a voucher holder, because it doesn't make sense. And then they talked about the apartments. We have apartments that are housing our voucher holders. If you have 100 units and 10% are set aside, that doesn't mean they're going to open up the other ones. I said, so what does someone have to do to get into one of these apartments? Well, pretty much they have to die. That is not okay. So there's that. When asked if they would extend the ZIP codes, which I would agree with, throughout Coconino County, the regional office in Phoenix said that they would and we could. They already go out to Munn's Park, Loop Road, and there's a few more places I had no idea. But they will not do Belmont nor Kachina with the argument it is too hard on employees to drive that distance. Yet they will happily drive to Williams once a year to inspect those homes all at once, which we are not being treated the same way because if my lease starts in October, I need my inspection. I had two within a year. If someone else up here starts in June, then they have to do that too. If you're going to inspect all of them in Williams, you need to inspect all of them in Flagstaff. And if you're going to drive to Williams, you should drive to Belmont. Another solution I proposed, which they didn't like, was let's reconsider the every two years. You hired an employee. If it's burdensome and time-consuming, let's inspect every two years unless a house has serious violations and there is a concern. But again, Sarah likes to say that I'm speaking from my own personal experience. She eventually apologized because that is not the case. I have several voucher holders crying and reaching out to me in our community that they are struggling. So I just would like the community to realize that this is what the Housing Authority wants to do. And it's me against a whole lot of people that work together and hang out after together. And it's going to affect existing voucher holders. So, thank you.
Mayor, our second commenter is Andrea Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, good afternoon. I'm Andrea Kelly. I'm Communications Director at Northern Arizona Healthcare. I'm pleased to be here with you this afternoon. I wanted to thank the many of you who were able to make it to either the live tour of, I mean, the in-person tour of our new primary care clinic or the open house later that evening a couple of weeks ago. And really, we were pleased to share that space with the public. And I just wanted to make a few comments here so the public can hear a little more about it. So we've moved our primary care offices in Flagstaff from Oak Street to Jasper on the McMillan Mesa. This is about one mile east of Flagstaff Medical Center. And we also moved our sleep clinic to Jasper. So those two services now join the cardiovascular and cardiothoracic specialty clinic. And that whole site, we call the Central Flagstaff Health Clinic. So at this new location, we are able to have 16 primary care providers, which is actually double the number of primary care providers we had one year ago. And we will reach that number 16 by the end of this summer 2025. We do continue to recruit and also search for new locations for additional clinics and providers because we do know that even us doubling our providers in one year, we still don't have enough providers for the whole region in terms of primary care. Us combined with other providers, we're still in need of more. We also have a new patient experience going on at this new primary care clinic. And it's a model we've used in our Camp Verdi Primary Care where patients check in and they're immediately given a room number to go to. They take themselves to that room and a digital system actually lets the medical assistant and the provider know that they're ready to be seen. So it should be also a more smooth process. As we continue to serve the needs of our community, we know we're growing out of several of our current facilities. We definitely heard during the 2023 Prop 480 campaign that folks wanted to see some NIH services remain in central locations. And that's what we're doing with this new clinic. We listened and we're keeping those services central. We continually are doing what we can to expand our outpatient services. And moving our primary care just one mile east of FMC does keep it central while allowing us to expand. So trying to meet what we heard on many fronts there. And finally, I just want to reiterate what we've said before here and what was in the Arizona Daily Star this morning as well. NIH continues to explore opportunities and locations for a new hospital in the Flagstaff area, knowing we're not able to renovate or rebuild a facility on our current FMC location that would meet the Northern Arizona region's needs for the next 50 years. And of course, as we've said, we will bring news to you when we have it on that front. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're moving down to proclamations. And I believe Councilmember Garcia, are you going to read this proclamation?
Yes. Do I do it from the dais or do you want me at the podium?
Will you go to the podium and the rest of the council, if you can join Councilmember at the edge of the dais? And is there anyone from the Commission on Diversity Awareness in the audience?
Mayor, I don't believe that there is.
Okay. Thank you.
This is truly an honor to read this proclamation. Thank you, Madam Mayor Daggett. The City of Flagstaff Office of Mayor proclamation. Whereas, United States of America celebrates Martin Luther King Day on January 20th, 2025. And whereas, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. will be remembered through the ages for his outstanding leadership as a man committed to fulfill his vision through nonviolence and his dedication to true spiritual growth. And whereas, his timeless dream of a nation unified in equality and brotherhood is really the American dream. And whereas, the City of Flagstaff must continue to work together to make human dignity, equal justice, and equal opportunity a reality for all. And I encourage all in Flagstaff to celebrate his memory by performing acts of kindness through service to others. Let us live out Dr. Dreams' teachings as we continue to work for a day when the dignity and humanity of every person is respected. And whereas, the City of Flagstaff recognizes the holiday symbolizing brotherhood amongst all and remembering citizens of the ongoing struggle to keep the dream alive of world peace, human rights, and dignity in our community and throughout the world. Now, therefore, I, Councilmember Garcia, on behalf of Becky Dabagut, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim Monday, January 20th, 2025, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day.
Thank you. And if there is no one from the public to receive the proclamation, then you all can return to your seats. Next up, we have council liaison reports. So let's start with Vice Mayor.
I have nothing tonight.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things for me. I apologize for not being there in person. While Mayor looks great on camera and sounds terrible, I sound just fine and look a mess. So I'm going to keep off camera. But I wanted to thank Chief Connolly for joining the Commission on Diversity Awareness meeting to share his vision and commitments to our community, particularly around engaging the community, taking a trauma-informed approach to serving our community and addressing questions from the commission and community members. I know the chief also attended the MLK Day event yesterday, and I want to thank him for reaching out and taking a community-minded approach to attending. While we're at it, I just want to slip in a recognition of Mary Ann Sullivan, who I know was just appointed to the State Supreme Court Steering Committee on Mental Health and the Justice System. I know that's not directly tied to this commission, but I think folks know how important community mental health is to me and bringing this awareness to all aspects of our community, including our local justice and service arms. So I thought I'd mention it here and congratulate Ms. Sullivan once again. And I'll just wrap with noting that last week I had the privilege of joining many on council and staff to celebrate the 2024 Citizen of the Year Awards. Besides being gifted with the words on service and community stewardship from the recipients, we were also gifted with a beautiful keychain that had this quote. It said, "May you be proud of the work you do, the person you are, and the difference you make." And so I'll leave it at that, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spence, I don't know that you've had an opportunity to attend your first commission meeting. Do you have any update?
Nothing to report. I'm still getting acquainted with the commission and the groups that I'm appointed to. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week was our monthly Indigenous Commission meeting. And I'm happy to report that Mariah Zavala was elected as a new vice co-chair. Darren Lance is an existing co-chair. And we had some initial conversations about for this year or next year, planning perhaps a pow-wow, so I'm really excited about that. More to follow. And also, last week was the Mountain Line Board meeting. And no new information is reported there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I was quite pleasantly surprised and very honored to find out that I was chosen as liaison to the Parks and Rec Commission. Thank you, Councilmember Matthews, for helping me out with that one. Parks and Rec Commission typically meets every third Monday at 4:00 PM. For in-person, usually at the Aquaplex, although that venue does change from time to time. At last week's meeting, topics discussed were new chair and co-chair appointments. So congratulations to Stefan Parsons for remaining chairperson and Austin Kerr for another year of co-chairing that commission. I recognize your sacrifice and thank you personally. Next on the agenda for them was the Snow Heroes update that we saw a couple of weeks back, followed by an overview of the five-year budget. I'll quickly broach the line items and topics discussed. Redesigning the public restrooms at Heritage Square is on their list. Plans to rebuild the heavily flood-impacted Ponderosa Park in the Sunnyside neighborhood behind Kellogg School are underway with construction slated for hopefully a year, just over a year from now. How Jensen Recreation Center HVAC improvements. The Native American Community Culture Center adjacent to Francis Short Pond has received some funding for design and development. Funding for Cheshire Park was increased for potential adding of some amenities and upgraded facilities. And a line item was perused for the concept and design of funding for all 80-plus acres of Continental Regional Park. Was also mentioned, but that one was a little bit further out. I would like to invite the members of the public to join the Parks and Rec Committee for our next meeting because we are going to be conjoining that meeting with open space to have a true pros discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you. In terms of liaison reports for commissions, I have a couple. We do have Tourism and Sustainability Commission meeting on this Thursday, so nothing to report there until next time. But the Tourism Commission had their annual Priorities, Objectives, and Tactics Retreat over at the NBC Suites Hotel a couple of weeks ago. It was a nice half-day meeting with a great lunch. You guys know how Discover Flagstaff operates. It was a nice professional presentation and deep dive into what we hope tourism hopes to accomplish in the allotted the travel trends for 2026, which is an interesting conversation. Discussion around visitor services, our meeting and events capacity that's increasing, international travel trends, social media outreach, and you know they're always achieving new heights there. Conversation around domestic leisure and earned media, also a film conversation. You know, I'm hopeful that Discover Flagstaff, I know you guys are listening, can do a much better, can do a much more justified job of highlighting some really exciting news that's coming out of tourism, perhaps during the next city manager report. But I will briefly just let you all know that the City of Flagstaff has been bestowed with quite an honor involving the U.S. Department of Commerce and the National Travel and Tourism Office and a private company that does branding and marketing for tourism and ecotourism. This, again, we'll get more of an update with details from Trace at some point, I hope. But this was a group that privately did research all throughout the nation. And because of their looking into all the rubrics and metrics they were looking at, they chose Flagstaff as the recipient of a pretty substantial award in terms of partnering with a big company back east that does marketing and branding to look at how to lift Flagstaff up. I was invited to a breakfast with the joint group of people who came from Washington, DC to do an initial site visit. The mayor was, of course, invited to participate in those. And Mayor Daggett, I know you were involved in some of the earlier ground laying for that once Flagstaff was chosen. On short notice, she wasn't available. I was happy to step in and have some great conversations with that group of people. And a lot more to come on that front. It's exciting news. And I'm sure the Discover Flagstaff team will be eager and proud to share more about that soon.
Thank you. The Commission on Inclusion and Adaptive Living meets tomorrow from 11:00 to 1:00. And all are welcome to sit in on the meeting. This is a really active commission and they're really a joy to work with. So, moving on to appointments. We have two appointments to make to the Heritage Preservation Commission. And the first council member to make an appointment is Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank and acknowledge the returning and new applicants for this important commission. Really appreciated reading through their applications, particularly some of the applicant statements on why they wanted to be part of this commission. This commission notes that appointed members should have an interest in the history and heritage of the community at large. And I noted in two applications in particular, the uniting of celebrating the community's history and recognizing the diverse cultural heritages that have shaped our community's story. So I am happy to move to reappoint Abby Buckham to the Heritage Preservation Commission for a term expiring December 2027.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Right, thank you. Next, Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, it was, I wish we had another spot because they all were very heartfelt in their desires to be on this commission and highly qualified, in my opinion, just on their interest and compassion. I am going to move that we reappoint Bernadette Burcham for a term ending December 27.
I'll second. I'll second. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Moving down to item number eight, liquor license hearings. We have two applications, and I would like to have staff presentations, both of them, at the same time. So I am opening the public hearing and staff, if we can hear from you on both licenses.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Georgiana Stasky, Deputy City Clerk. Before you today, the first application is a Series 13 Farm Winery License for All You Need located at 2781 West Pico del Monte Circle. The agent on the application is Kyle Winfrey with owners Kyle Winfrey, Sean Strain, Vanessa Winfrey, and George Glowenlock, handling the day-to-day operations. The Police Department and Community Development conducted their respective investigations, and the reports are included in the agenda packet. And they're also here to answer any questions. And representatives from the business have also been invited to attend the hearing today. And I'll move right into the second one. Next is an owner transfer of two stacked series, a Series 7 beer and wine bar and Series 9 liquor store license from Majestic Marketplace located at 601 East Piccadilly Drive Number 95. The Arizona Department of Liquor does allow these two licenses to be stacked and active at one location at the same time. The agent on the application is Lauren K. Merritt with owners My Powell Patel, Vishal Kamir Patel, Chirik Pai Patel, and Surin Patel, and Vipil Patel, handling the day-to-day operations. And again, the Police Department and Community Development have conducted their respective investigations. Reports were included in the agenda packet, and they are here to answer any questions. And representatives from the business have also been invited to attend the hearing today.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions about their application? Right. Stacy, do we have any public comment?
I have not received a request for public comment.
All right, I'd like to close the hearing. And, Council, I will entertain a motion on the first application.
I'd like to move that we forward the application to the state with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Second.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
I.
Hi.
Any opposed? All right. And on the second liquor license application, yes.
I'd like to move that we forward the applications, both applications, to the state with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Sterling, does, do we need to amend what Councilmember Garcia, his first motion?
Thank you, Mayor. No, actually, the way that it's recommended here is the way it should read, so that's fine.
Okay.
Thanks.
So there's a second on Councilmember Aslan's motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Five. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. All matters under the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine. And unless a member of the city council expresses a desire at this meeting to remove an item for discussion, we will enact it by one motion approving the recommendations listed on the agenda. Unless otherwise indicated, expenditures approved by council are budgeted items. So we have Item 9A through 9C. Council, are there any items you would like to pull? All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as posted.
Thank you. Is there? Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you. We are moving down to routine items. 10A, consideration and approval of our 2025 state and federal legislative priorities.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Sarah Langley, Public Affairs Director for the city. So today, I'm back in front of you to ask for your formal approval of the final version of the city's 2025 federal and state legislative priorities. Go ahead and minimize this. So last time we were in front of you, we heard your feedback and input that you provided on the draft document that we shared, and that feedback gave us really good direction on how we can kind of organize action items and zero in on those broader level priorities. So we made note of that, and we also heard support for the priorities as identified in the draft document. So we really only made a few additions. I'll walk through those now. First, looking at the federal priorities, the only change we made here is to add a focus on accessible flood insurance policies, so affordable and accessible. And then at the state level, the only change we made is to specifically call out within our affordable housing priority, the state affordable housing, sorry, Arizona Housing Trust Fund. And we did hear good news that monies for that were included in the governor's budget, so that's something that we'll continue to keep supporting throughout the session. So those are all the changes we made. Mayor, I'll pass it back to you for the council's comments, and we'll ask for your formal approval.
So do you have any questions or comments? Stacy, do we have any public comments?
No, Mayor, we do not.
All right, then I will entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
To approve, to approve.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2025 state and federal legislative priorities. My apologies.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Opposed? Right, thank you. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
I'd be consideration and approval of grant agreement.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Shannon Anderson, your senior deputy city manager. Today, I'm going to be joined by Detective Bethany Hyde from our Flagstaff Police Department, and also Michelle Rucker. She's online. You'll see her up on the screen. She's the Director of Human Trafficking Services with Northland Family Help Center. So I wanted to start our presentation today to share a little bit of background on the city's human trafficking-related efforts. In December 2022, the city conducted an assessment with the assistance of LD Consulting to evaluate policies, procedures, and practices related to vice crime, which includes trafficking. We began an organization-wide training, both in person and online, to be designated as a city empowered against sexual exploitation through the Arizona Anti-Trafficking Network. We currently have 60% of our employees trained, and this effort began in April of 2023. In June later that year, we shared information about the newly adopted policy on exploitation and trafficking, which established best practice guidelines for investigations. In September 2024, the Flagstaff Police Department and Northland Family Help Center worked together to submit an anti-human trafficking grant application. There was a team of employees from both organizations that led us to that successful grant's submittal. We learned in December 2024, later that same year, that this grant was received, and Detective Hyde and Director Rucker are going to share more about that here in a few moments. Before I turn it over to them, I wanted to point out, the city will begin transitioning to the Fiat designation to partner with our Northern Arizona community members to bring awareness on human trafficking and drive down demand. This will replace the cease training that I referenced earlier in this presentation, and we'll be kicking this off at the beginning of 2025. For those who are still learning what Fiat might be, that's the Flagstaff Initiative Against Trafficking. So a similar designation, but really focusing here in Northern Arizona. I'm going to now turn it over to Detective Bethany Hyde, and she's going to walk us through the specifics of the grant.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Detective Bethany Hyde with the Flagstaff Police Department. So I want to go over the grant here that was awarded by the Arizona Department of Public Safety through House Bill 2897. Eight hundred million, I'm sorry, not eight hundred, eight million dollars was awarded to the state of Arizona to be distributed in the amount of up to $500,000 per agency for cities, counties, and towns. The purpose of this grant is to provide assistance to victims and also law enforcement agencies to prevent human trafficking. It does follow ARS 26106, which outlines those parameters. So for this particular grant, 428,658 was awarded to the City of Flagstaff. $22,967 of that was specifically awarded to Northland Family Help Center, and then the remaining $405,691 is awarded to the Flagstaff Police Department. And I want to outline that this is a huge testament to the relationships that we are building within our community, not just as a police department, but with our victim services. I'm going to turn it over to Michelle Rucker, Director of Human Trafficking Services at Fiat, to outline what the $22,967 is for.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Again, Michelle Rucker, Director of Human Trafficking Services with Northland Family Help Center, and I also serve as Chair of the Flagstaff Initiative Against Trafficking. So as has been said, this grant and our community receiving this grant is really a true testament to many years of work in building relationships and trust and collaboration between our city, our law enforcement, and our victim service providers here in the community. And I know I can say on all sides, you know, we couldn't say enough good things about our partners, especially, you know, the ones who are here with us today, and as well as for Chief Connolly, who's support for this grant. Without that, this would not be possible. So for the portion that will be allocated to Northland Family Help Center, if approved, is primarily for personnel expenses. So, and really, in the purpose of this, and the purpose of Northland Family Help Center's involvement is to allow us as a community to adopt the model that has been determined to be the best practice nationwide when it comes to doing work to combat human trafficking and exploitation, and that's to have victim services who are trained and have experience serving this population embedded within the work of our public safety work. So our role at Northland is really to support and bolster and just augment the work that's going to be done by Flagstaff Police Department to ensure that we are supporting victims of this crime type and having a robust community-wide response. So we will be providing victim services with the funds that were allocated in this. The Northland Family Help Center, as many are aware, is the primary emergency shelter provider for victims of trafficking here in the community. I mean, we serve many folks who are not necessarily just experiencing this crime type in Flagstaff, but all across the Oregon, Arizona. So we will be providing emergency shelter, counseling, victim advocacy, and wraparound services within the shelter setting, as well as case management to help those folks get on their feet and get connected with resources for support and long-term care. We will also be working on a coordinated community response to identify victims and support them throughout both the criminal justice process as well as the healing process. And so that's really where my role as Chair of the Flagstaff Initiative Against Trafficking comes in. Fiat is a collaborative of organizations working here in the community as a coordinated effort to support victims of this crime type. So in my role as Fiat and serving as Chair, and that is really what I am tasked with in addition to providing the necessary training for all folks who may interact with a victim here in our community. So the coalition itself, number one, coordinates our community's response. Number two, provides education and training. And number three, collects data to estimate prevalence of human trafficking victimization here in the Flagstaff area through the Flagstaff Area Human Trafficking Database. So bullet point two, that is essentially what the Funds for Northland Family Help Center would be allocated toward. And then finally, any work that is being done by law enforcement in terms of operations and recoveries made of trafficking victims here in the community, we have committed to being the primary victim service provider and victim advocacy provider for those operations and any recoveries made by Flagstaff Police Department. And with that, I will turn it back to Shannon.
I'll actually be taking over the next section, so.
All right, Bethany.
That's okay. So I wanted to kind of set a groundwork and an understanding of human trafficking here in Flagstaff. And understand that human trafficking is the most profitable, or one of the most profitable illicit industries in the world, with it being $150 billion industry worldwide, second to drugs and arms dealing. Specifically here in Flagstaff, understand that with the intersection of the I-17 and the I-40, those are two major arteries that lead out to the entire United States and act as an artery between Las Vegas, Phoenix, and Los Angeles, which are major hubs for human trafficking. And with that, I want to kind of explain why and what we're going to do with this grant if awarded or approved, and why we need these pieces and elements. So this is going to cover a dedicated human trafficking detective, which is myself, and it's going to allow that position to become a subject matter expert and lead the department in law enforcement best practices and emerging trends in human trafficking. As far as training goes, in addition to the cease training that Senior Deputy City Manager Shannon Anderson already went over, there are detectives with the Flagstaff Police Department that have had, received over 400 hours of combined training in 2024, significantly enhancing our expertise in the field. And looking ahead to 2025, this grant is going to support continued enhanced training in human trafficking practices. As far as multi-agency operations, so we've already partnered with Coconino County Attorney's Office, the Coconino County Sheriff's Department, NAUPD, Arizona DPS, and other agencies in surrounding counties and cities to partner together to work on combating human trafficking. And understand, when I talk about multi-agency, it doesn't just mean law enforcement. One of the things that we hope to do with this grant opportunity is to make sure that educators, hotel and restaurant employees, parents, short-term rental owners and their neighbors, and every single member of our community understand that they can be a part of this initiative and making a difference when it comes to this crime type. And that includes every single council member sitting before me today. As far as enforcement operations, the reason why these are important is because the victims of trafficking rarely ever reach out to law enforcement. It's not something that is commonly, people call up and say, hey, I'm being trafficked. And so oftentimes for reasons because they're made to fear law enforcement, they're undocumented, they're underprivileged members of our community, and so they overall have a mistrust or distrust towards law enforcement. And so in order for us to actually target people who are trafficking these victims and find victims to rescue out of this, it takes a lot of proactive enforcement work from law enforcement and our community partners. This grant's going to help support the personnel needed for those enforcement operations as well as the equipment. So this does, with the addition of a human trafficking detective, it's going to include the need for an equipment to support that detective. That's going to be computers, phones, radios, anything that comes with the position of a detective. And then, as I already mentioned, it's going to support personnel. I can't do this work on my own. It's, I need all of the, or not all of, but a good portion of the department to support me in these operations, and that requires a lot of work and personnel hours. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Council if you have any other questions.
I have a question.
Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you, Shannon, and Detective, and Michelle. This is really an amazing program and funding opportunity for a service I know we all wish wasn't necessary, but also have to acknowledge is absolutely necessary and needed in our community. I appreciate the attention that you're bringing to this matter and the multiple levels at which you're showing us that human trafficking impacts and affects our community. Detective, your presentation was very impactful, and I want to thank you for your dedication and commitment to this work, and am really looking forward to supporting you and the department in these efforts. I also wanted to take a moment to say thank you to Shannon. I know Greg gave you this shout-out, I think just last week, but I also wanted to acknowledge your support and leadership for these initiatives for our community as well. Thank you to Shannon, the Northland team, Chief Connolly, and the department for all the work that is going into these efforts so far and that will continue to go into the efforts to come. And Mayor, I'll leave it at that, and I'd like to make a motion when the time comes. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to thank everyone involved, and Councilmember House listed quite a few, so thank you for taking that on. This is such an important topic. Thank you to everyone in supporting the victims, bringing the community together and making a huge impact in Northern Arizona. If we think that we're immune to this, we're not, and this is just a huge moment to have this grant in front of us, and I just thank everyone involved.
Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I will follow suit with the rest of the council on thanking everyone involved. I wanted to specifically speak to Michelle Rucker and say that I know that your job is difficult for many reasons, but the one that comes to mind the most is when you have to kind of dig deeper, when somebody comes to you with other, whether it be substance issues or mental health issues, and to kind of suss out or find out, figure out what the root of that is, and often that is human trafficking. I guess the, so I really appreciate the work that you're doing there because it's very nuanced, and it's not black or white or something that you can easily define. And so the 20, the allotment of money from the state for your department is, in my opinion, kind of the root of where everything blossoms from. So I appreciate your guys' hard work on that. I had a quick question for the detective in that I was curious, for the police officer or the detective that's going to be hired for this, are they currently working on things of this nature? And maybe that's not exactly the question. Let me try to think about what I'm trying to ask here. Has this position been funded prior? Will it be, will, do we have an opportunity to grab this grant again, or is this a one and done?
So as it stands right now, I'm not sure how many funds are still allocated of that original $8 million. It's a, if the funds are still there or still in that bank, we can reapply for it again in July, but that's an unknown factor. But that's an unknown factor at this point. The position itself, I've actually been appointed to that position. I dabbled in the work a little bit prior to this position being appointed. However, I was going through the process of sort of establishing my training behind it and making sure that I knew what I was doing before we did too much work on it.
Well, I really appreciate it going to someone who obviously has a, maybe not a passion, but definitely an interest prior to even having the job. So you seemed the right fit for the job, and I appreciate all the work you and Shannon Anderson are doing and the rest of the Flag PD, of course.
Thank you.
Councilmember Haslam?
Thank you, Mayor. My earlier prompt for a question went into the sustainability chat. So that's how well I'm doing with teams right now. Detective, I do have a couple of questions for you, and I encourage you to use your discretion in answering my questions. They're quite open-ended, and I'm just curious. I'm trying to get a better picture. Uses many details, obviously don't be specific, but use as many details as you want or not. I'm curious if you can paint a picture for me what a human trafficking bust looks like in Flagstaff, especially when it's something that's passing through, something that's coming in from I-40 or I-17, and how you guys become aware of that and what an operation looks like in general. I just don't, I don't have a picture of, I don't, I mean, SWAT team showing up, or is it real quiet? Is, I'm sure it can vary. So maybe talk about that just a little bit. And then my other question, obviously you're a woman. I'm wondering if there seems to be some obvious, maybe pluses in the plus column of why a detective, it might be beneficial to have a woman in that role? Or maybe that's completely arbitrary, and I'm drawing conclusions that I shouldn't. Maybe you can speak personally to what that means to you and how, what you're specifically going to bring to this role that makes you the perfect candidate for it.
Right, so I'll answer your first question conservatively. Obviously, we don't want to reveal some of our practices that would make it so that people don't do this. But an operation is going to look like, definitely targeted on the trafficker or somebody who is looking for, how do I say this? To sexually exploit, whether it be an adult or a child. My focus right now has been pretty heavily on children victims and child exploitation. And those are some of the arrests that we have already made. We do try to keep it very quiet in secluded areas so that we are keeping any sort of apprehension, protecting our public, protecting even the person that we're arresting and protecting our officers. So we do those sort of in quiet secluded areas. They're quick, fast, arrest them quickly, and then bring them back to the station and process them and handle them, interviews and all of that. They're just like we would any other investigation. There's evidence collection associated with it oftentimes that helps support our investigations. I hope that answers your question.
Well, I understand you need to remain vague, so I will leave it to your expertise to share as much as you feel you can. And obviously, you're doing a good job of keeping it quiet because that's part of the reason I don't have a picture in my head of what this looks like on a, you know, those few moments that are big deals that come and go. So that's fine, I appreciate it.
For sure. To answer your second question, just to, not to self-promote too much, but when I was a graduate student at NAU, I wrote my master's thesis on human trafficking and wrote a, or did a lot of research behind it. So I had a lot of book knowledge going into it. Not necessarily operational knowledge. That's what I've gained through the training, the law enforcement-specific training in the last several months. That's enabled me to understand how to safely do these operations from a victim-centered approach, while also making sure that we're putting these heinous criminals behind bars. And you mentioned being a female in this role. It certainly has its pluses. I think from a victim approach, a lot of victims don't necessarily want to see a big scary male in a police uniform, especially because there is a lot of fear with law enforcement. And so being a female, there's definitely that opportunity to be more gentle in my approach with victims. And they just feel, oftentimes feel more comfortable speaking to a woman. So while there, I will applaud many of the men that I work with. They're phenomenal at what they do, and I'm grateful for their support. There's definitely some pluses to being a female in this role.
Thank you for sharing, Detective.
Councilmember Garcia?
My apologies for not asking this question sooner, or earlier. So I know about the sexual exploitation and child trafficking, but are there any other forms of trafficking, like labor trafficking? And if so, I'm not familiar with that. So what would that look like to you or to the department? And, yeah, just that.
Yeah, so I'll give a sort of broad example of something that I actually did encounter in our community with an undocumented victim from another country, who, and this is, the reason I, I'm not going to get into specifics of this particular case to protect the victim, but also understand that this is what it typically looks like. But you have, so these underprivileged undocumented workers, not always undocumented, but this is our common victim, where they are brought to the United States illegally and then asked to pay off their debt that got them to the United States by forcing them to work for no pay or little to no pay. And it's, they're a very easy target because they know that it's not, or they feel like it's not safe for them to come to law enforcement because they're afraid of being deported or whatever reason that might arise. So it happens right underneath our noses, unfortunately, quite often. And so those are the types of labor trafficking that we would see.
Excellent, thank you.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been exposed to some of the human trafficking just because I was involved in a nonprofit for many years. Can you give us an estimated number per year of what you see coming through our town? I know that so many people have no idea that we have human trafficking issues here in Flagstaff. Can you throw out a number?
I'm actually going to defer to Michelle Rucker for that because she's had a lot more exposure to the victim side of it. I can say that we've made, and the reason I say that is just because, like I mentioned before, a lot of these victims are not going to come to law enforcement initially. They usually go through Victim Services first or the hotline, the human trafficking hotline, and then they are connected with Michelle. So she has a lot of that data in regards to that. Since we've started to initiate this work from a law enforcement side, we've made in the last few months probably about 12 arrests between child exploitation, sex trafficking, and even one labor trafficking case. So I'll defer to Michelle for some more specific data.
Thanks, Detective Hyde. So I can speak from a couple of different perspectives. At Northern Family Help Center, being the primary shelter provider, we served 32 confirmed victims of trafficking in 2024 alone, which is pretty significant. In terms of data collection and screening, we have been ramping up those processes. So the vast majority of those 32 are counted as adults. However, the vast majority of victims are more than likely going to be youth, especially runaway homeless youth who we serve on our youth shelter side. So when I say that we had served 32 confirmed in emergency shelter in 2024, and that number is probably an underestimate of how many folks we actually served. In addition to that, we operate the Community Crisis Hotline at Northern Family Help Center on behalf of Northern Arizona Care and Services After Assault. And through that line in 2024, we assisted 242 individuals who contacted the crisis line with a primary complaint of human trafficking and exploitation. And from a community perspective, I oversee as Chair the Flagstaff Area Human Trafficking Database, which takes information from participating community organizations who are serving this population. And it really aggregates all of our data into unduplicated figures. So we can see since 20, the end of 2018, when we started actually compiling data here as a community, we have identified well over 462 adult victims of trafficking who have sought services here in the Flagstaff area. And again, we just started processes for counting youth. Only one of those folks in that figure is youth, in fact. So we're looking at over 460 adults since September of 2018, and basically no counting of youth. In reality, we're likely going to see more youth being exploited in our community than we would adults in reality. And that's just based on scholarship and research done in other communities that are very similar to ours. And if you have any other questions about that, feel free to let me know.
I have a question.
Thank you, Michelle. And then lastly, and I know this is kind of generic, and I have a little bit of understanding of it through a contact through the Child Protective Services in the state. I imagine that it's a lot harder to identify a child that's being exploited here for whatever reasons. So do, if we identify a child that is not with their guardian or parent up here, are we able to place them in a foster care facility up here or home? Or do they go down to Phoenix?
So I can say that Northland Family Help Center is going to be our primary resource for an unaccompanied child. And they have already been incredibly helpful in that arena. And then from there, and Michelle Rucker, please correct me if I'm wrong on this, but from there, they often are transported down to Phoenix because there's more resources and care down there for extended care.
And I'll just add, our goal is to, you know, in the long term, change that. The best practice, most of the time, is to provide both short and long-term support to a survivor of exploitation in their community of origin. We, as a rural community, are going to have more familial trafficking and then they're going to see in larger cities like Phoenix, meaning family members committing this crime against children especially who are in their care. And so the hope would be that, depending upon the circumstances of that person's victimization, that there's somebody else from a kinship perspective, another family member or another placement that would be available for a long-term stay, would be, that we'd be able to provide that here in the community. There is a danger in taking especially young people out of a smaller community like ours and transporting them to Phoenix, where they will face different types of exploitation than they're going to face here in their community. There is documented risk of doing that, and a lot of communities have to do that because pretty much anywhere outside of Maricopa County, we're under-resourced, especially in terms of foster homes and therapeutic foster care. So, you know, in a long-term capacity, it would be a goal to have folks who come seek out services here in the community, be able to remain in the community, be able to continue going to the school that they're going to, and be able to stay, you know, in community with the people that they know and that care about them, while also, of course, assuring their safety from anyone who was subjected them to exploitation.
Thank you, Michelle. And I'll just end with just sending my gratitude towards you and Northland Family and to our Police Department. It is a much larger issue than the majority of us understand. I've heard some firsthand, just mine, terrifying stories of what happens that most of us don't understand or even can imagine. So thank you all. I hope there's more money to come because it's a bigger problem than this one grant, but it's a good start. And if any of the council members have not toured Northland Family Health Center, I encourage you to do so. You guys run a pretty good area, and I appreciate all your work. So thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo what my colleagues have said and to thank city staff and especially the Police Department and city leadership for taking this, this crime seriously, the way that it should be treated. I appreciate how seriously it is being taken. And Michelle, I'm wondering whether you want to talk about the film on Thursday? I know that's just as a plug for the film on this topic.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. In two days, Thursday evening, we will be hosting a documentary screening of a Survivor-form documentary called California's Forgotten Children. So while the survivors in the documentary are from California, this is probably the best documentary on human trafficking that you could ever watch. You get to hear from firsthand the perspectives from a very diverse group of survivors who have all had very different experiences within human trafficking and recovery. We are also going to be, after the screening, having our partners, Applejack's Ranch, who are a survivor-led organization that does work with us here in the community, providing a question-and-answer session after the screening. So that is going to be, again, this Thursday, the 23rd. It's at Coconino Center for the Arts. Doors are at 4:30, and the film is at 5:00. And if you would like, I can send, you're welcome to get in touch with me, or I can even put my email in the chat. Everybody should probably have my email at this point, but all are welcome. Please share with your networks. And we would just love to have as many folks there as possible to learn about this and then learn from the local survivors doing this work alongside us here in town. Thank you. Thank you so much. Excuse me, Councilmember House, did you want to make a motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to approve the acceptance of the grant from the State of Arizona Department of Public Safety Anti-Human Trafficking Grant Funds in the amount of $428,658 for fiscal year 2024 to 2025.
Sarah Second? Thank you. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? Great, thank you so much. Thank you, Michelle. All right, item C, consideration and approval of contracts.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I'm CJ Perry, your IT Director, and we are here to talk about fiber that's coming to Flagstaff. So this originally was going to be a consent item because we've had a lot of discussions about this, both in executive session and presentations to city council. But we have two new council members, so I thought I'd do a quick kind of history of how we got here and then move forward with this. So there are four agreements that we are going to be approving today, and I'll kind of go over what each of them means here in just a second. So the first one is a right-of-way license agreement. This is just kind of a standard form for the use of our right-of-ways for fiber internet. There's a standard license fee of 2% of gross revenues. WECOM would like to use our right-of-way in order to provide internet to all of the community, and so we're really excited for that. And I state this with the 2% of gross revenues because there is some negotiations as part of this design-build contract for the city's portion in relation to that. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the history of kind of So I wanted to talk a little bit about the history of kind of how we got here. So about six years ago, I kind of started on this journey to try to get better broadband, better fiber here at the city. We designed a master plan with, I don't know, kind of rough back-of-napkin estimated costs of around $20 million to build that out for connecting all of our city facilities, all of our city infrastructure, all things like that. We started by including conduit in a lot of our capital projects. Traffic engineering was one of the first ones to really help get us started and and get us off the ground. They brought the first big fiber project down Butler, connecting all the traffic signals down Butler. Then COVID hit, and council, along with lots of communities, started to prioritize broadband. We noticed the difficulties of many students trying to do online schooling, businesses trying to conduct business online and all of that. So council allocated ARPA funding and later additional general funds to build out a network just to get us started and get us off the ground. Our goal was to entice the private sector to come and build Flagstaff. We did briefly explore the possibility of a municipal-run network, and while there are a few successes out there, they're dwarfed by many, many struggles and failures across multiple communities. And so we decided we would like to go to try to find a private company to help build out the city of Flagstaff. Later, the federal government signed the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, or IIJA, which included broadband equity, access, and deployment, BEED, funding. The federal government loves their acronyms, specific to building fiber. So at this point, with all of this money starting to come out, we pivoted to let's let's find a partner, let's find a partner now. We kind of had a long-term, 20-year plan to kind of build this out, use some of this infrastructure to help bring investment to Flagstaff. But with all this federal money, we really pivoted quickly and decided, now's our opportunity. Now's a good good chance. So we released an RSOQ to find a company that would be willing to build fiber for our community as well as a dedicated network owned by the city for our internal infrastructure. So when we're when building, excavation costs are the the most significant cost. So once you have a trench open, adding another piece of conduit is just a small incremental cost in relation to building from scratch. So we figured if we could work with an ISP while they're building, they could put in extra infrastructure for the city. It would reduce the costs overall, and we'd basically, you know, get both things at the same time. We'd build for the community and build for the organization and meet our needs as well. Around the same time, Coconino County released an RFP for a similar purpose, but theirs was focused more on allocated BEED fundings to Northern Arizona and advocating for some of that those BEED funds to come to Northern Arizona to fill that underserved and unserved populations that tend to be more outside of the Flagstaff city limits. But that happened at about the same time. After reviewing multiple submissions, we selected WeCom as the internet service provider for us to work with. It was great synergy because Coconino County also selected WeCom in their RFP at around the same time. So here we are today. Again, we've had multiple presentations to council, both at the dais and in executive session. This is over six years' worth of work by multiple divisions to finally kick this whole thing off. We're excited what this will do for both us, the city as an organization, but also for the community as a whole, both within Flagstaff city limits and kind of the greater region beyond. So as part of this, just to kind of give the highlights of the financial terms, we are providing $2 million. As I mentioned, there was some ARPA funding and other general funds that were provided with this purpose in mind. We're utilizing that for for this build. We are doing a 20-year lease of excess city conduit. As I mentioned, we did conduit as part of our capital projects. This helps WeCom build faster and cheaper without having to tear up some of our roads and reduce right-of-way license fees. So for the first three years, there will be no fee. Then it bumps up to 1.5% for the next seven years and then goes to the normal 2%. That's that's part of the the license agreement after that. What does the city get out of this? We get city-owned fiber to all of our city facilities except the landfill. It's a little bit out there, and we weren't able to make that work as part of this build, but we'll look for that in the future. And then WeCom will also provide emergency maintenance on city fiber. And the big thing for the community is they're going to bring fiber to homes in in our community, so we're really excited for that. So again, there's multiple agreements here. There's the right-of-way license agreement for WeCom to use our right-of-way to build this fiber network. There's the fiber design build that's specific to what we are getting out of it. There's a conduit lease agreement for WeCom to lease our excess city conduit, as well as that fiber maintenance agreement where WeCom will be managing our fiber from like an emergency maintenance perspective. So that was kind of short and sweet. I do have Paul Fleming online, the CEO of WeCom, just here basically to answer questions. He doesn't have any specific presentation, so curious if there's any questions or comments from City Council.
Thank you, CJ. Council, do you have questions, comments? Counselperson Sweet.
Thank you. This has been a lot of years and a lot of hard work, and I just wanted to thank you for keeping your eye on the prize, and this will be a big difference for our community. When I first got on council, we were having these discussions, and I did not realize how important this really is. So thank you. Thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
All right. And Stacy, we don't have any public comment?
No, but I see that Councilmember Spence has his hand raised.
Oh, Councilmember Spence.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I just have an operational question. If the city puts in a larger conduit to allow for subsequent fiber optic cables, if that's the right term, to be run through that conduit, what do the junction boxes look like where one piece of fiber optic cable can be joined to another fiber optic? For instance, if there's a subdivision that's being built and they're going to hook into an existing conduit location, what's the size and nature of fiber optic junction boxes?
So I can answer that to best of my ability, and Paul can correct me if I misstate anything from his design perspective. But quite often, most of the boxes kind of midway along the way tend to be small boxes in the ground. You usually see kind of like a steel plate over them, and they're they're flush with the surface. But at major communities, quite often, there's a distribution point, and that might be a larger vault, which you'll you see kind of around town that could be above the surface as well.
Thank you.
And yeah, it looks like Paul's on, so if he wants to add any comments to that, feel free.
Well, first, I appreciate you having having me join and giving me the opportunity to speak, and thank you to the city of Flagstaff for all the support and hard work. It's going to be an amazing project. Everything you described is accurate. CJ, thank you very much. I mean, you know, generally speaking, they're flush with the ground. They they're kind of, you would see with water lines or electrical lines, when they kind of put a little vault underground. And inside of that is, in essence, just kind of a black plastic box, and all the fiber cables come in that, and they get spliced to whichever additional fiber cables that'll be leaving. So I think CJ's description was was fantastic, but I'm happy to expand on that if helpful.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to thank you, CJ and Paul, for bringing this forward and following through with it. This is a good program for all of our community, but I mainly think, well, access for for information is important for all of us, but especially to the the community that I connect with, our underserved community. Giving them access to information could improve their life and increase generational wealth and 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 just knowledge, which is so much power for for those who haven't had it before. So the more conduit that we lay down, the more lines that we put around, the more access we're going to have for everyone. But what speaks closest to my heart is our underserved community. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia.
All right, Council. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would, I move to approve, one, the design-build service contract, two, the city conduit lease agreement, and three, city fiber network maintenance agreement, and finally, four, fiber license agreement, all with WeCom LLC.
Well done. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And Sterling, I'm sorry that I didn't catch this. Do we need a separate thing to a separate motion to authorize the city manager to execute?
I think that was implied within the motion.
Thank you.
So I think we're fine.
Thank you. All right. Moving down to item number 11, consideration and approval of grant agreement.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I'm Mac McNamara. I'm the Engineering Section Director for our Water Service Division. We don't have a formal presentation for you today, somewhat of a quick summary of the grants and the project for you, and then, of course, the opportunity for us to be here in person to answer any questions, comments you may have. So the request of approval before you is the first phase of a DEMA grant for the backup generators at Rio de Flag Reclamation Plant. The grant share is $450,000. The city match would be $50,000, which would be funded by the Proposition 441 Bond. Phase one, of course, covers design and engineering services. It is a multi-phase grant, so upon meeting the performance metrics in phase one per DEMA, we would move into a phase two grant, and that grant comes in at 5.1 million, which roughly puts the city's match at $575,000. And that would go fully towards construction and development of the site. Big thanks to our Grants and Contracts Office for working through the through the paperwork so we can get the grants. With that, I'm open to any comments, questions.
Council, any questions or comments?
Mayor?
Yes, please, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you give, this this grant applies just to the Rio de Flag plant? So am I correct in understanding it doesn't have anything to do with the Wildcat wastewater treatment plant?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Spence, you are correct. This grant covers power for the Rio reclamation plants, and then another large part of that plant is the Influent pump station, which is located at a lower elevation that pumps Influent up to the Rio plant.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly highlight the importance of this grant and for what it's being used for as that backup generating system and the ability to turn on and off the power ourselves is is really important when it comes to some of the climate change issues that we're seeing and subsequent fires because of those things. Now, if anything happens to our electrical power over there by the plant, we'll be able to continue to keep that water flowing, and that is very important for me, who loves to drink water. So thank you.
All right, Stacy, do we have any public comment?
No, Mayor, we do not.
All right. Council, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the grant agreement with DEMA for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for the Rio de Flag Water Reclamation Plant Backup Generators in the amount of $450,000, 90% state shared with 50,000, 10% local match requirement.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Thank you, Mac.
Thank you.
Item number 12, open call to the public. Stacy, do we have anyone?
Not tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Informational items too from Mayor, Council, and staff and future agenda item requests. Let's start with Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things. One, I'm really thrilled to share that, you know, one of the fun parts of our job is connecting people and being advocates for our local communities. And this week, went out with the Boys and Girls Club to view $400,000 worth of exercise equipment to their four facilities donated through Pine Canyon. Super excited. We went there thinking, okay, used and looks brand new, so they're just figuring out how to move things around. That was really exciting. The second thing I wanted to just share, and I don't think it's a fair item, I'll let you, somebody tell me, but I know on everybody's mind are the fires, and we've been talking for a long time. I know you've been a big advocate, Mayor, about fire insurance up here. My sister has worked in the insurance industry for well over 30 years. She lives in Cornville on a five-acre ranch with trees surrounding her area or her property, but not in her property. She's losing her fire insurance, and I bring that up just because we've had initial discussions on our resource overlay protection policies. I just sent to council pictures that I got from Neil Chapman, just with a startling contrast of what our thin forest looks like comparative inside our city limits. It's an aerial view. It's in your inbox. I want to give a shout out to ForFry. If people don't know, we have a really great forest restoration initiative for four neighboring or three neighboring counties besides us. And I know when I was in Washington, DC, two years ago, the USDA highly complimented our efforts in our forest restoration and thinning and stuff, and said that we were really the poster child for the rest of the country. And I I mention that because I I don't know that everyone in our community knows their efforts. But having said that, I also know, and I spoke to Sustainability about this, Jenny, and I had a great coffee over this last week. The carbon neutrality plan is going to be updated and just reviewed this year. I'm looking forward to that. But I think that, looking at the disasters in California, the Northern California fires a couple of years ago was reported to have set back California 18 years in all of their very aggressive efforts to reduce their carbon emissions. Who knows? I can't even imagine what these LA fires have done. And I bring that up just to highlight and point out that we can do all all the great things that our Sustainability Department is doing. I think we've made some great progress, and we've been very aggressive, which is wonderful. But that could all go up in smoke if we have a major fire, which is a threat. You know, everybody knows that this winter has been very dry, which means that we're at such a huge risk. We've got a fire out at Parks already today. So I just want to bring the conversation to the public. We're getting a lot of emails questioning. People are, you know, highly concerned just seeing how crazy an actual city can burn. You know, we think it's all out in the forest. So I want to request that we have more conversations at city council meetings to educate our public on the efforts that we are doing, but also find out if we can do more. We're starting budget retreats next week. I think that we really need to aggressively look at the resource protection overlay requirements that we have. When you see the pictures that I sent out, you're going to be shocked, or at least I was. And also, is there, you know, when we're looking at our budget, do we have enough resources? And I know it's not just a city thing, it's a county thing and a state thing, but I feel, you know, stressed over what is, you know, could possibly happen this year, and I think that we need all hands on deck. So I just wanted to bring that up, and, you know, I think that the carbon neutrality plan, I think that it's a good And, you know, I think that the carbon neutrality plan, I think that it's a good time to, Jenny and I have talked about forest, fire mitigation and forest health is in there, but maybe it needs to be escalated, elevated. I know it's in good hands with Jenny and Nicole, but I just wanted to highlight that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember, for your comments. I don't believe a fair is necessary on this. I think the discussion is coming, and I think it's going to be a continuing dialogue. The most recent meeting we had internally on this very topic was this morning. Followed a meeting that we had last week. There's obviously, obviously, a lot of attention being afforded to this topic, and you can expect that discussion to come to the dais. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. And Mayor, I apologize. I skipped over something that was a really important point because we've talked about this on the insurance. My sister, being in this industry, the insurance industry, for so many years, I said, why are they canceling your fire insurance? Like, I look at her house, she's got five acres with a mulberry tree and an almond tree. Everything else is on the outskirts. And she said, the insurance industry looks at two factors, the fire line and an aerial photo. So, if we look at the pictures that I sent to everyone, you're going to see that that's not going to weigh well for our citizens in Flagstaff if those are the two criterias that the insurance industry looks at. And to think that my, she goes, obviously, we don't have any special favors working for an insurance company. But she is not protected, and she doesn't even have any trees on her property. When I look at mine, I have nine on my small lot. So, we're at a high fire risk. And I just wanted to bring that out about the insurance and how they view who they're going to cancel, you know, coming up in the future and who they're not.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As an advocate of arts and culture here in Flagstaff, a longstanding advocate, I would like to just let you, the community, know that this past Saturday night, I attended the Art Activation at Coconino Center for the Arts, put on by Creative Flagstaff. This exhibit entitled "The Power of the Golden Ratio in the Fibonacci Sequence" is an impressive offering, featuring local artists such as Chanto Begay and Federica Hall. This is, this exhibit will be running throughout the month of February, and I encourage members of the public to attend if art is your thing. Moving forward, I will be attending, or I will be visiting our Public Works Director, Mr. Overton, for a facilities tour in this upcoming week, as well as Heidi Hansen with Economic Vitality and her team. So, I look very much forward to meeting some of the folks that I have yet got to know here at the city and also understanding where their priorities lie and how we can work together to make those priorities blossom and flourish. Lastly, I'd like to invite the public to join me at the Public Library Conference Room from, for the library board meeting at 1:00 PM, Thursday, January 23rd. I hope to see you all there. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Haslam?
Nothing for me, except I'm going to try to see how far I can go with the Fibonacci sequence. 01123581321, I'll stop there.
Thank you. Councilmember Spence?
Can I go? This is Vice Mayor.
I said, Councilmember Spence.
Okay.
Sorry, I was asleep at the wheel. I have nothing to report.
Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe you have one of the items that I was going to report on, so I'll leave that for you. But nothing for me tonight, then. Thank you.
And Vice Mayor, please.
Sorry about that. I thought you were looking at me on the screen there, Mayor, telling me to go. Anyway, last Thursday, I was very honored to attend the Aging Well Arizona event, and I was able to speak to the audience. And I learned that Flagstaff has earned the dementia-friendly community designation. As the first Northern Arizona city to earn this milestone, we're hoping that we might inspire other communities to follow suit. And more importantly, this DFC moniker represents an increased awareness and recognition of needed support systems. It was a great event. And if you want to know more, I can certainly do that. And yesterday, I attended and read the proclamation at the annual MLK Day at NAU, and that was also a great community event. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember House, were you referring to the anti-trafficking documentary Thursday evening?
I was, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Well, that has already been touched on, so I'm not going to say anything more about that other than please contact Northland Family Help Center if you would like tickets to that. But one thing that I did want to mention is that this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday is the annual point-in-time count. And this is where volunteers go out throughout the community to talk with people and get a count of those who were unsheltered on particular nights. And this count is really important, not only to connect with people in the community, but also for when we're looking at federal or state funding around unsheltered services. And they're still needing volunteers. And if you would like to volunteer, it is a really meaningful effort. And so, I highly encourage people to step up. You can email Flagstaff Shelter Services at And Catholic Charities is also organizing volunteers. So, I hope to see some of you out at that. City Manager, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all of your work in Washington, DC. Good to have you back. I, we all hope that you feel better soon, so get plenty of rest. I just wanted to let you know in the council, I will be out of the office for the next six days, returning for the huddle meeting on Wednesday morning next week. I will be absent at the next council meeting. I'll be absent at the DVA meeting this week. Vice Mayor Sweet will be there, and I will get notes from her and our police chief. In my absence, Shannon Anderson will be the acting city manager. So, just wanted to give you an update on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Enjoy your vacation. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.